Is there any way we could add Emily's letter at the end of the deal that she sent out to the airport boards, or just discuss that in whole business? We need to put that on the agenda.
Is it not in our package?
It's not. It just came out yesterday via email.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bradley would like to add correspondence from treasurer pertaining to the airport. Letter that she sent out by email yesterday. I would like to discuss that. You can treat it under old business if that's acceptable to everyone.
Can you just put it on the monthly reports under her part?
We can. Excellent. Thank you.
If that change, I do approve the agendas presented.
Motion. Motion second by Commissioner Vickery. Favor.
Aye.
All approved. Has everyone had the opportunity to go through and review the prior minutes? And if they're acceptable, we'll...
Make motion to approve the minutes as written.
Motion made by Commissioner Bradley to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Yes. Next, Billy Pope, Roden Bridge. Hey Billy, you're so soft spoken. I've had several people ask if you'd slide that mic closer to you and...
I'll speak up.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning. You guys got my activity list? We're kind of doing a little bit of everything.
Is all that paper that's coming through edited work going to Gardenwood?
No, no, that's actually going to landfill. We've got some pretty good muddy spots. And we're... Anyway, yeah, so we're covering my spot. So I'm coming out of here with that. I was using the stuff we had to go up Cottonwood. Redoing that 143 road. But this stuff, this stuff has better... Little bigger rock. So for up there on, in all that clay, it just packs in better so we get trucks turned around. On the top, we just put, you know, we're doing another section up there. So I did get a road in there so the trucks can turn around without sinking. So that's what, that's where we're all due right now. So I got side dumps bringing it to the pine yard and then end dumps. Taking it up to the landfill. And we're just, we're open, pretty much got all the roads. They'll finish. We got New Fork, Newble Gap, North Cottonwood all open. They'll finish today. They're down on the big sandy, the lander cutoff road. So that'll be done today. Today we're plowing and trying to, trying to do... I guess we're jumping the gun a little bit. We're trying to start doing some dirt work, but... Mother nature keeps knocking us back. I did, and I don't know, I mean, I think we've done, the county's done their part, but I did get a call out there by Steve James here like, like in 2012 when the green started going into the failure creek, started almost washing out the bridge on the state. We went in and did a dike to push the water back so it'd stay out of failure creek. That's starting to fail, so it's probably gonna fail when runoff hits it. So the ranchers out there never worried, so I went and looked at it. It's just, you know, needs, you know, we just did it as a temporary back then. It even needs some work. I've contacted the state. Haven't heard nothing back. I mean, it's not really our problem, but last, you know, last time they had us go fix it. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that that's, that's gonna probably with this runoff. It's already kind of running over it right now, so that may be an issue. Like I said, it's really not our problem, I guess, you know, but we did do the work, but it was supposed to, the court was supposed to come in after and make a plan back then, and nothing, nothing ever came of that, I guess. So we're... It's runoff's gonna be interesting to see what... If it goes over the bridge or not, but... Like I said, the dike, what we did is just, you know, it just needs some more rock put in place. Some rocks kind of washed down. Just needs some more rock and some more just to build up that dike more, but I know Seven Mile was, is gonna maybe get hired Tony Roberts to go in there and do stuff, so I told him that, you know, they ought to check with the court and stuff before they do, but that's kind of where we're at on that. So we'll see. I haven't heard back from my talk with Kurt at the state, but he's on vacation this week. He went out and looked at it. That's who it affects, you know, it affects the highway there, so we'll see what, what he comes up with. Other than that...
Please, Commissioner Stevens.
So yesterday I heard that this ditch up here where it leaks through, county went in there and fixed it. They've been running a half. This year they're gonna full, the full ditch. So if your observation, they're not gonna put the pipe in yet because they don't have the money. So they're just, but they are gonna run the ditch full, so where does that put us?
Well, you know, when that started moving, you know, we, we hauled in all that material to, you know, to try to stabilize that bank, put pressure down there. It's not gonna be good. I mean, that was, they were supposed to, the state I thought was gonna come in and do something after, you know, or make the, you know, ditch company do that. I don't know.
I mean, there's nothing our liability there actually, I'm sure. I mean, we did it out of good faith, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah, we, we just went in because if that bank was moving, it would, I think if we wouldn't put all that pit run in there, it would have, it would have gave out then because it was so saturated. And it was, the bank was moving down.
Anyway, I just heard that yesterday.
Yeah, it ain't gonna be good.
I know Mike's been working on that. When he gets back, I'll give you an update on that front because I'm not in the loop on that one.
It, it hasn't moved since they cut back the water.
Yeah.
But I don't know what it'll do. Needs fixed.
Yeah, I'm sure it's something to do with wanting the water down below or what it is. But anyway, I'm just curious.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Billy, didn't we trade the DOT for a bunch of roten mill?
Yes.
And you got that right.
We got that.
But our hands are washed of that project unless they come back and ask for our help again, right?
Correct. Yep, they, they gave us a bunch of roten mill and we stockpiled it down there, you know, off of Speedway. And then, and we had that section that we had all roten mill down there and we just added on to that. Made it kind of high end. So yeah, they, we, that whole deal's been, so we're, we're done.
Next question. The, I know we approved the industrial site road and that water drainage project. And I hear some preliminary works going on now on that. Can you walk us through where you're at on that and the next steps?
Yeah, we got the project approved. We came in a little over budget, so we went from a 10-foot alley pan down to a 6-foot alley pan. And teletractors got that, and so we're just getting the paperwork started to start that project this fall, or this spring.
This spring?
Yep.
So just a little over the budget we approved?
No, we, when we changed it back to a 6-foot valley pan, we came in right over budget.
We were gonna do it tanned, just, just so it'd be, you know...
Our first plan was a 6-foot, and then it was looking like we were gonna come in under budget, so we pumped it to a 10. Then we came in over budget, we went back down to a 6, so we got right to our number.
The reason we're gonna do it tanned is for, you know, because you're gonna have to skidster and clean it and stuff. I've been out there because, you know, the runoff, you know, we had some pipes plug and started washing around the pipes. And that's, we've, we've been out there cleaning the pipes, jetting the pipes and keeping the water running. But yes, we've been, we've been watching because now, you know, with the runoff and that, that's when it washes all the pipes out. So that's what we've been doing out there right now.
Oh, thank you, guys. Last question on the guard rails for Paradise Road and Skyline? What happened there?
Well, what happened there was, you know, people...
Decided to use them as bumpers.
Yeah, and they were slick, and so one truck, one, on the Paradise one, he, he lost control. It was icy, lost control, hit it. It was wedged up on it. He almost went over, and so it just, it broke it loose from the, so we're, we're having to... You know, bridges, you gotta do them up to spec and everything, so I'm waiting for guard rail. I had to order a guard rail. And then well, I got my welders and they've already got the bridge back, welded back up and stuff. So when I get the guard rail, we'll put that up. The one in Skyline's a little different because it's a new one. And that car ran into the end of it, so I gotta get a whole new piece. And then that's, it's, you know, that's the ones that are anchored into the ground, into the concrete and stuff. So we're gonna have to put a bit of work on that one, but I hate when guard rails get hit because it's, they're high money. You know, it's, guard rails, everything to do with a guard rail is expensive. But that's, so we've, we've been working on that a little bit because that one's, that one's wood posts and then with the concrete and stuff like that. So there's nothing I can do about that, but we've been working on the Paradise one. I mean, we got it temporary. We got, you know, barrel there and safety stuff, so if someone runs into it, they, you know, it's not gonna hurt them or whatever.
On and off in the river?
Yeah, but the Paradise one did, way that, the way that bridge is designed and that it, you know, it did some underneath structure damage, so we've been under there welding and fixing all, putting all new light beam and stuff. So it's just taking time because of the ice and stuff, but, you know, we got our lift and we're under there. So, but we got that part pretty well done. We're just waiting on guard rail.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Then I got a lot of stuff I was hoping to already be started on, you know, like at the golf course, trying to get dead willows pulled out and stuff like that, but mother nature's not helping us. Landfill, kind of, we're covering the mud. We're still picking up metals coming in quite busy again, so that's good to see. Shredder's working good. Things going good there. The pro shop, the golf course we opened today, so it's open. That's all done. We still have a little thing on the credit card machine that, that should be, I mean, we can take credit cards. We're just waiting for the new keyboard pad. That's supposed to be here this week, but yes, we're open for business out there. That's exciting. That's about all I got.
Mr. Chairman?
I do have one thing.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Been having, I don't know why, the piney all around here, been having a lot of sign damage, you know, people. And then, I mean, we always have signs. They always shoot the signs and stuff like that, but I'm having them, like, they're switching signs. Yeah, this weekend I had a, a horse creek, they, they couldn't get the 55 off, so they just like bent it around. And then they, they hung a 70, but it was a legit 70 sign, and then a lot of signs they'll take off. They'll, they'll switch the, the curve signs, you know, the one going this way, they'll switch it. So we got a lot of that going on, so if you ever see...
Been a long winter.
And then I did notice your sign is gone.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that too. For whatever reason, somebody just stole the thing. I don't know what the reason would be. You know, there's three, three folks that live on that road. We're one of them. And you have to have a ranch to take them off, so whoever did it, I guess, pointing at Commissioner Vickery because he's been there 30 years.
Big wooden sign that has it.
Yeah.
Really?
So much sheriff's aware of it. I filed or had them looking into it. Who would do that? You know, just my name on it.
Scott Liner was up at the one at Horse Creek. It's crazy. I've never, I've never seen him switch signs. Out of all the, you know, they shoot them, you know, they steal, you know, tear them down. I've never seen him start switching arrows and stuff like...
Pretty ambitious, aren't they?
Too much time.
It was me, darling. I took it. It was a preemptive April Fool's.
Yeah, well, just so you know, sheriff will be knocking on your door. So, so, Mr. Chairman, I have just, Billy, last meeting, I think I heard you say that stuff coming from Jackson sounded like a big number that it cost those folks. Did I hear that right? Did you say 40,000?
If you're bringing, oh yeah, because, because we, you know, we charge them now to count. You know, it's not as, as, we cut them a little bit of a deal, but it, you know, they're, they're still, they're still paying way more. So when they bring seven, eight trucks, that's, it's, it's about 40 grand.
Oh, that's not per truck, then that's for the total. Oh, gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I misunderstood that. That makes more sense. Yeah, I'm thinking, wow, that's pretty good ticket.
Yeah.
I have to carry the truck basically like they're all.
Yeah, yeah. So when they send that many, that's about what we, we end up making like 40 grand on it.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you.
I just got a quick update on the South Piney Bridge. I finally went with the landowners, talked about it. I don't think we can get away with doing two big pipes because if one of them clogs, there's a chance it'll wash the bridge out and then, or the ditch out, and the county's kind of on the hook. So I'm looking at a multi-plate aluminum box culvert. They're the cheapest route we can go. But a full bottom one, I thought they'd spread the whole load out, so you didn't really have to worry about bearing capacity. But it turns out the full bottoms are just for scour. They don't transfer any load. So we're getting some soil tests to see exactly what the bearing capacity is. Then I can get a better idea of what, what kind of project this box culvert's gonna be. Because it, with that gas line and the way the ditch is across the road, it tends to have been about 150 feet long. So it's a pretty big structure, but it's kind of the best I can come up with without driving piles and putting a bridge in or looking at a concrete box culvert, which is even more expensive. So finally went with the landowners, so I'm getting the size and I'm getting numbers. And I'll be able to update you a little more as I get the design a little more fine tuned. Getting progress on that. Cattle guards are advertised in the Casper paper. Had a couple interests. Keith Hughes is looking at it. He somehow missed the first one, which I don't, I sent him the email, so...
Bennett stopped yesterday and said they were preparing a bid also.
Yeah, so that's, we'll have that. I think HK will put one in, and then I'll just have a new, I'll send out a reminder when we do proposals halfway through just to make sure nobody misses it in the future. Progressing on that front, so that opens next week, and I'll bring the results to the next meeting, and hopefully we'll be under budget and be a go.
Great. Okay, so, so, Mr. Chairman, I do have, Eric's still here. So I'm not sure how to ask this. I guess just ask it. So when you advertise, the projects are done. Like the Chip Seal project, it was advertised, completed, whole deal. And then two or three months later, there's a ticket in there that says Chip Seal Project from Rio Verde Engineer. So how does that?
So we do their, we do our advertisement and then, because we only bill once a month, so when that bill from the paper comes in, then we just pass it on to the county because we pay for it upfront. And then when we get the invoice from the paper, after the advertisement's over with the proof of publication, then we pass that to the county.
Okay.
It's just a, just a timing issue. If it came in when we could do the, do it that month, we do, but a lot of times they're after the fact.
Mr. Chairman, I got another question, I guess.
Please.
Invoices. Seems to me there was a Circle Nine reservoir invoice in there again. Isn't that something we put to bed?
We were waiting for them to finish paying Rio Verde so we could do one reimbursement. You devoted to make good on that contract. We were waiting on one invoice that they pay Rio Verde and they finally paid it. It's a mini voucher.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, so one other thing. It is April 1st, right? So if, if we're to believe, or if I'm to believe the dire straits that we could be in from a financial standpoint, I'm just wondering if perhaps we ought to maybe slow down on looking at future projects until we know exactly where we're at in this deal. Because as far as I'm concerned, I'd a lot rather see the money go towards folks who work for the county rather than a project that perhaps we really don't need at that point in time. Does that make sense to anybody? It does to me. Because we're looking, apparently we're looking at a real downfall or downsized in revenue according to what we hear at the treasurer's office. And so based on that, I think, you know, rather than go forward with projects or new projects, I'm not saying stop in the middle, of course. Complete those, but before we go looking at more, perhaps we ought to step back a minute and see, let's see where we're at from a financial standpoint, so we don't have to completely dig into our reserve accounts for things that we may or may not need, if we'll put it, just throwing it out there for a thought process.
Well, these, the projects we're working on right now are ones that...
No, I understand that, yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah, anything in, you know, like, anything that's coming up, I mean, I'm, you know, gonna put off everything we can. You know, like South Piney Bridge, that's, and I mean, they really, they, and I'm, I'm really trying to let, you know, because right now I'm looking at the chip seals and that. I'm really on ones that are even close, you know, that, I mean, I'm letting them roll, you know, another year. Mainly, mainly, you know, as long as we do real good sealing, you know, if we crack seal good, a lot of them will be able to let go. You know, so I'm, I'm really being cautious on because I, I know that like the South Piney Bridge, I mean, that, that thing's, that thing's been in the works for a long time. The only other one I really, you know, we're gonna have to do some is the Reardon Bridge. That's probably the only main thing that it's a big deal. Because of, you know, the way calling clean both sides of that now, it's, you know, it's like four foot below the floor of that bridge and, and half of that bottoms ate out and stuff, and it's, you can see where it's stressed and stuff. So that, that's some that we're probably gonna have to do this, you know, in the next year or so. But other than that, I'm, I'm really gonna be, I'm gonna put everything off, so...
So you've got to clean that out some now, don't you?
Yeah, it's...
I don't think there's a bottom in that thing.
There is. We dug down.
What are those wooden posts from the old bridge still doing, sticking up in there?
They're right there, and then it's so weird, but, because we didn't think, we hand dug down and you get into a floor. Most of it, because you know, you see where they've reached in there, half the floor is gone. But, and you know, I mean, Eric, we're just talking, I'm like, I'm half tempted just to go ahead and dig the rest of it out. So, yeah, but I don't know what that will really do.
Do you still have one of those railcar bridges or...
No, I still don't.
So you have to be, you dig it out and pray for...
Are there any further questions, comments? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Next up, Andre with maintenance, please.
So got quite a bit done this last couple weeks. So the golf course hood vent, we modified the hood vent over there to accommodate the new equipment that they've gotten in the kitchen. Fortunately, we had inspections and it was, we found out it was not going to pass inspection with the new equipment. It just didn't line up correctly to cover the new stuff. So we got that taken care of pretty quickly, actually. And then Marbleton Food Basket, we've been upgrading the lights and doing some, some electrical things there and some things that they asked us to take care of. Nearly done. I think he's got like 12 lights left. And then he's finished with that over there. We also repaired the front door. It was having some issues, and so he called me out. I went out and we took care of it. Fire system inspections, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but we split those up because there's just too many buildings and too many systems to inspect all at one time, and so this is the second half. We got those all done. We also include the hood vents at the senior centers and the golf course in that batch. That's all completed. So the fairgrounds roof, I had it, I put new leak because I wanted you guys to know that it was not on the stuff that's been repaired already. It was something different. And so we had that same guy go out and repair that one as well. It was, you know, not terribly expensive. So, but the old stuff still is not leaked. As a matter of fact, Jay told me when I talked to him that when that new leak happened, he goes, "What that guy did had to have worked because it would have surely leaked with the way the weather was out there and how it melted and everything." So pretty pleased with that. And I've been using him on some other roofs now that we've had issues with, you know, over the years, you know, without success. And so far, he's, he's batting a thousand on the roofs. I got some repairs done in main control that were from the inspections. There were some ceiling tile issues in there that the inspector didn't like. Someone had done some work in there and didn't put the ceiling tiles back. They probably broke them because it's not just a regular ceiling tile. It's a, it has to be cut and shaped to go around a piece of equipment. And it's very difficult to get in there. Anyway, we got that done and some drywall repairs that they wanted done. Ice rink lights, the, the stuff's been ordered and the jobs plan to be completed the end of May or early June. It's set in stone. We're getting it done. 4H building met with contractors, received quotes for exterior paint and new windows for that building so I can budget for them for next budget. And that's about it.
Any questions?
I guess just one. What about, what about the gate system? Is it operational yet or not?
No, we have to wait for the ground, the ground to fill up, and then for Dan to get down at the hospital so he can do the electrical so that we can hook it up. We do have plans prior to that to have the gate guy come and install the motor. We just didn't want to install it, you know, through the, and just leave it sit back there.
Yeah, makes sense, yeah.
We're looking at getting that done shortly and possibly... We're looking at getting that done shortly and possibly getting some temporary electrical to it, like with the generator to, so we can program it and make sure it's operating correctly, so that when Dan hooks it up, it's just ready to go. Kind of the plan.
Nothing else? Thanks for getting that, that Marbleton stuff.
Yeah, he jumped right on it. He said it was pretty dark in there.
Okay, up next, I'd like to go into executive session. Employee performance review.
Mr. Chairman, I, I moved to, we go into executive session sixteen dash four dash four oh five A, Omen Nut Two, employee performance review.
Thank you. All in paper.
Call the meeting back to order. Next is Holly Roberts, Planning and Zoning.
She should be able to turn her mic on now.
Are you able to turn your mic on, please? Holly, can you hear us?
She can turn her mic on because I enabled her.
Do you want me to call her and have her, sure, go through the phone? Because Blake can talk.
Hey there, this is Emily. So hit, it's really, really, back.
She needs to hit mute on her.
Hit mute.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, I'm going to hold the phone up to a mic so it can be heard, is that okay?
Yep. Good morning, gentlemen, how is everybody this morning?
Good.
Good.
I'm terribly sorry, I'm apparently having some technical difficulties, it's not letting me unmute on team, so sorry about that. So where we're at, at our last meeting, we discussed the termination with the contractor, Blackrock Consulting. And it was conveyed to us that it was your guys' wish to have us go back to, excuse me, back to the table and go over our regulations again, and that you guys weren't totally happy with the product that we had so far from Blackrock. So, or Whiskey Rock, excuse me, I'm sorry. So I guess where we're at is we would like to just work with you guys and kind of get a better idea of what it is exactly that you, that you didn't like with where he was at in the process and just kind of give us some general direction as to what you guys are looking for. You know, it's been a really long project, we've put in lots of years into revamping these regulations and we just want to make sure that we get them right and it's a product that you guys are happy with and that you are, would be willing to accept. So like I said, we're just looking for, if possible, a little direction from you guys.
I'll throw something out there. I guess the whole board's going to have some conversation here, but I'll throw out my thoughts. I'm not clear through this, I'm 92 pages into it. I didn't participate in any of the public venue meetings they had three years ago, but I did get some calls during that time and some things I vaguely remembered. There was some RV issues, some feedlot issues, some house or building, better descriptions they wanted on buildings. In this red line, those have been addressed. Have they been addressed in the way that the people wanted them? That I do not know, but there's been an attempt to correct a lot of the issues that were brought up, I think, during those meetings. I don't like the tables he has on there right now, and maybe it's not that I don't like them, the font's so small on some of those bigger tables that you can't read them, they're hard to see what all's included in those tables. So, and through the red line copy, there's so much of it that's Xed out that have transferred to the tables that there's a lot of confusion in the red line copy. I think a cleaned up copy of this thing, there are five or six things that I'd like to suggest change in it, but they're all minor things. I think Whiskey Rock has presented a document that has some useful aspect to it.
Okay, yeah, no, that sounds great. Does anyone else have any comments?
Just a few of those things, you know, dark skies was a pretty hot topic back then. I feel like they're pretty lenient in their dark sky definition and uses. There were some RV issues. I think they've granted the owners of RVs a little more leniency there than what our old regulation showed. Feedlots had an issue, I think that has become more Sublet County friendly than what was in our old regulation. There is a deal in there on fencing that has struck out, the planning and zoning approval of six-foot fencing, which I would disagree with, I think any six-foot fencing in this county ought to be approved by planning and zoning just because of wildlife issues, safety issues, site issues. I mean, there's a lot of issues comes with six-foot fencing and you guys, in there, it relieves you of the duty of that. And then the page numbers, I'd like to see the chapters at the bottom of the page and perhaps when a clean version comes out, there will be less confusion on where you're at in the document. But with the red line document, you read along and you don't know where you're at in time being. So with page number, I'd like to see the chapter at the bottom of the page also. Minor things.
Okay.
Mr. Vickery?
Well, I guess the one big thing that's, actually two things that have been brought to my attention. Number one, whether it's in that order or not, don't know, but there seems to be, the bulk of the folks that have contacted me and the ones that I heard on the last planning and zoning mission meetings seem to indicate, let's just go with the 23, because we've done so much work on that, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of hours, a lot of public input. And let's go with that version to begin with. I agree with Commissioner Bradley, there's some good things in Whiskey Rock we can put in or incorporate. But the one overriding thing that I've heard was the ones that a lot of folks are concerned about is short-term rentals and how we're going to handle those, because they could become a huge issue in Sublet County if they're not properly addressed. I think the other thing too, and this is me, I have a feeling that there's a big push to get this done quickly rather than back off for a minute. I don't know why that would occur, because most generally, at least in my experience, if you do things too quickly, when you get down to the final version, you look back and say, wow, we should have thought that one over better. So whenever, whenever you guys do whatever it is you're going to do to address some of the shortcomings, the short-term rentals is big, I know Commissioner Bradley voiced concerns on some things. I'd like to see it to be, for me at least, understand, be more concise. I think that some of the definitions could probably be looked at to include more and sometimes less issues. And, you know, the vision that I have as an individual who's lived here quite a while is to know that we cannot control growth because it's going to happen. But I think we do have an opportunity to guide it, put it in the right direction so that when Sublet County wakes up 25 years from now, say, wow, we're still okay. We've had some, we've had some growth, it's needed, but we haven't taken away the complete aura of what Sublet County is. And so it's not a, in my mind at least, it's not a, let's hurry up and get it done. And I know there's been time put in by a lot of folks. But these things, to me at least, if it takes another year or so, so be it. I'm not sure, there might not be an opportunity to reach out someplace and visit with folks who've been through this, trying to bring these regulations up to speed so you can satisfy most people. We know we can't satisfy everybody, that just isn't a doable thing. But I think there's some things that the Planning and Zoning Board can look at, take a public input to help make those decisions and present something to us here to look at and say, wow, you know, this looks good or maybe we need to clean this up a little bit. But until we actually see it, it's hard for me to go through, and I haven't got to that 90-page, I've only got to about 45 pages of it. And I'm still somewhat confused on some of the stuff that I read. So you're going to have to have a concise direction for the average people in this community to realize where we're going, what we're going to do, and the good and the bad is what it amounts to. You're going to not be able to satisfy all, I know that. But in order to keep the integrity of this county, what we, at least I appreciate, we're certainly going to have to slow down major development away from the hubs. And I'd say the hubs like the Pinedales, the big piney Marlton's. The major developments that occur outside, pick a number, five or six or seven mile buffer of the towns have nothing but higher taxes for the citizens here to accommodate those folks. So that's, in my mind at least, an important thing is to look, where do you want to have a subdivision? What's it going to look like? Who's going to pay for all the infrastructure? Are you gonna be here forever to take care of this? Are you gonna, when you leave, you're gonna leave the, the burden on the taxpayers? And so those are things in my mind at least, certainly need to be addressed. And hang on for the ride, I guess, best I can say. But I don't think it needs to be as bumpy as we've been led to believe. I think there's ample room, ample opportunities for folks with the mindset of let's keep it as good as we can, knowing well, it won't be as pristine as it was. I still think we have that opportunity to slow some of this development down where it's not necessary to have it. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, Dave Stevens. So I guess my concern and question is to you, I was at the last planning and zoning meeting and it sounded to me like part of the planning zoning board is getting very tired of this. Uh, it was even, and you were one of them, but you brought up the motion just to throw it in an envelope, both of them just send it to us. And I, uh, I'm curious if, if being tired of it, if you just kind of wanna wash your hands of it and let us do the remaining work, which that was not the original plan. You were supposed to come with something pretty much finalized and then we picked through it. So I just want your feelings on, you made the motion to send it to us and it didn't pass. So I'm curious if you're tired of it and, and you're just wanting to wash your hands of it.
No, that is not the case at all. It's not that, that I'm tired of it. I, I honestly, I personally, I liked the product there, that Black Rock, or that Whiskey Rock had presented. I, I liked their product and I'm definitely not tired of it and I don't wanna wash my hands of it. And that's why I asked, um, to be put on the agenda today is to get to see back from you. Because I, um, I wanted to know exactly what it was that you guys disagreed with, with the product that you had. Because like I said, we do want to get this right. And so that, and like I said, I, I liked what he presented. That was just my personal opinion that I, I liked the layout of what he presented. I liked the tables. I, like I said, um, I was just a fan of it. And it's not that I'm trying to push this through by no means. Um, and I'm not trying to wash my hands of it. This has been a super long process. I mean, it's been over the course of five years and, and we've had great public input. We've had great comments. We have, and I say, we, I honestly, I got in on the very tail end of it. So I can't even say that I did all of the work. The previous board members definitely put in a ton of time on it. And, and I, I don't wanna just push it through. I wanna have something, but we have to keep this moving. We have to keep progressing and that's where, like I said, I just feel like we're at the point that we, we would just like some direction from you guys to see what it is that you want in there. Because, because we have, we've gone through it line by line. We've, like I said, I feel like we have taken all the steps. And, um, I just wanted a clarification as to what it was that you disagreed with, with the consult.
Cause I guess I was current concerned that, you know, three to two, there wasn't an agreement that that's what people wanted to do. So it sounds like to me, part of the people on the planning zoning still wanna go through and do some more details. And then the email I got from you last night, you know, you highlighted a very long process. So, I mean, I'm getting the feeling that we've said all along here, every commissioner, that like Doug said, if it takes a year, that's what we wanna do. But I just, I'm getting the feeling that you're all, or part of you are, are wanting out of this deal. So that's my.
Well, like I said, I, I apologize if, if we've put that off to you. Like I said, um, we, we did disagree with that, that part of us wanted to go through it again and part of us didn't. But we are definitely moving forward with going through it. We plan on going through line item by line item and, and getting it correctly. So we're definitely not trying to push the stuff or wash our hands of it, for sure.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
So walking through this whole process, so we got the 2023 version that, that has what the planning and zoning put in red, um, what the planning office said in blue. We took that version, sent it to Whiskey Rock and said, hey, you know, make this, this good. We have the Whiskey Rock's version that has their line items in it. We have the Whiskey Rock's semi-final version that they came back to us with. Um, if, if we were all on the planning and zoning board, listening to us, what's our direction? Do you want us to go to the 2023 version that we already sat through, went through chapter by chapter? Put all the public comments in it? Do you want us to, you know, what, what don't we like? What don't we, what, what would you guys say if, or want to hear? If the five of us was on this planning and zoning board coming back to them? Cause obviously we're not happy with everything we've got, but we're not given any direction on, on what to do. You know, besides, besides clean it up today. I mean, Mac, you said some good things, Doug, you said some good things. What, what are we asking these volunteers of our, our board? Do we want them to go back through chapter by chapter, open it back up to the public? Cause we already got that version. When, when are we gonna get our bite at the apple? And, uh, and take care of it on our side and, and hash out what we want as a, as a five-member board for this planning and zoning regulations? I don't, I'm, I'm confused on what we're asking them to do.
And in my mind, the Whiskey Rock product is workable. I, I think.
I think any of them are workable, right?
I think they take that semi-final product and, and they sort through that and send us a final. It's my opinion.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make one more statement. So two meetings ago, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think it was two meetings ago when Mr. Grimm was here and is that correct? Was it two meetings ago, Holly, when Mr. Grimm was here? Wasn't it?
Uh, yeah.
It was? Okay, so, so I just sat there and listened to the, what was going on, the discussions and some point in time and might've got off track a little, say it didn't. But the part that really, when I walked out of there, the part that concerned me the most was when at that point in time, Chris Lacinic was the chairman. And he had, he had quizzed Mr. Grimm in detail, which a detail is where the devil sits. So you need to do that. And, and I heard Mr. Lacinic at that point in time, ask the other four board members, do you have any questions? Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions? There wasn't a question arose, many of the other board members concerning, or pointed towards Mr. Grimm. So I had, when I left, right or wrong, I had the uncomfortable feeling that perhaps other than Mr. Lacinic at that point in time, the rest of the board hadn't went through Whiskey Rock's presentation. Or if they had, why wasn't there at least one question from one of them? So my concern with the Whiskey Rock is, have you guys really digested it? Because from that indication two meetings ago, I think most of you were kind of like me. You started in on it and saying, wow, I don't understand all this. And quite frankly, I don't. There's, I mean, there, a lot of that stuff in there that I don't understand. I know from my own perspective, I, what's right and what's wrong in my mind, but does that make it a regulation for zoning? Probably not. But it's all out there. So I, I'm, you know, I'm somewhat confused as to why you wanna take Whiskey Rock when in my mind, the planning and zoning board hadn't went through it piece by piece, which they should have. And, and then turn around and present it. Hey, I have no issue with taking something. If it's been recommended properly, if it's been vetted properly, it doesn't bother me at all to look at it and say, yeah, this looks good to me. But until that's actually occurred, I'm just not ready, as a commissioner, as one, ready to, to, uh, voting on something that's gonna change or could change the direction Sublet County goes for the future. I'm just not gonna do that. So it's gonna have, for me at least, be concise, it's gonna have to make sense. And I don't care how long it takes to do it right. Because we're not just playing with what's gonna occur for the next six months. We're looking, looking to perhaps next 25, 30 years. We don't know. And so it, it just needs to be vetted properly. It needs to be brought for, and, and Mr. White's got some value, some valuable thoughts there. What do we want of you? Well, you guys are the ones, yeah, you're a volunteer board, understand that. But you're the ones that are tasked with this thing. You're the ones that should have went through this piece by piece and maybe you did. But I can assure you, two weeks or two meetings ago, when the question was asked, do we have any questions? There had to have been somebody ask a question if you had read the thing and, and brought up some concerns. There had to have been some, but it didn't occur. So that indicated to me that that board, good, better and different, hadn't went through that thing piece by piece, which they should have. So that they could have had a question or could have said, yea. There was not a peep with the exception of Mr. Lacinic. And, and he got chastised big time. So be it, that's part of the political gamut. But to, to not sit on that board and just say, okay, here it is, we're happy with this, that's just not right for the future of this county, I don't believe.
Commissioner Bradley?
I, I'm gonna go against Commissioner Vickery a little. I mean, I've read the old one and this Whiskey Rock one mirrors our old one. Ninety percent of it is exactly the same with some additions that have come through these public comments. There, there's not a lot of change in this document that I can see, other than some additions.
Okay.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner Bradley, there, there's, there's definitely some stuff and I'm not ready to vote on any of them. I never said that, you know, if this takes another year, so be it, fine. But ultimately it's our choice on what we want in these regulations. And we can continue sending it to board after board and people after people. And they're probably still not gonna write exactly what each one of us want in there. Alls I'm saying is, when, when is it, um, up to us to go through it line by line and try to get it explained? Yeah, there's, there's about 10 to 15 things in here I really wanna discuss. Um, there's probably the same in the 2023 version.
But in my mind, we need to give them direction and take one of them and go.
Correct.
And then bring it to us.
Yeah, whatever, whichever.
And if they take Whiskey Rock and they, they're a hundred percent happy or whatever they decide to do, then it comes to us and, and we can have the conversation. But they gotta pick one of them to run with. And I can't see where Whiskey Rock has taken anything away from our old regulation.
There's a few things in there.
I mean, they're, they're pretty minor.
Yeah.
And they've added things which came through that public comment. There's several things they've added. Whether the definitions are what people wanted, I don't know, but those definitions are now in there.
No, absolutely.
So with that, yes, Commissioner Stevens?
No, I agree. I think we need to today get that settled, what we're gonna do and, and send whatever, you know, I, I just feel like that it's went too long now in a way. You know, I maybe blame Whiskey Rock for not hearing, so we can blame them. You know, we waited on those and, but I think some people have got wore out because it's went so long. You know, we don't get the public input that we were, that don't come to the meetings. And so we gotta get those people geared back up if we're getting close to making some decisions. So I think we need to move forward today on some.
So with Commissioner Stevens' statement, public concern, is there any individuals that would like to talk? Or in regards to this? And we'll open the floor to the public opinion, please. Blake?
Yeah.
Blake Greenhall, Vice Chairman of Planning and Zoning Board. Just to your comment, Doug, I, the, the meeting with Whiskey Rock, you know, how that was all gonna roll out, wasn't laid out really well to us beforehand. Where speaking for myself, I really went into that meeting wanting the public to say what the public didn't like about Whiskey Rock's thing, not just what I don't like about it. Cause it's not just, like you said, what I want in planning and zoning regulations. So I think all of us had went into that meeting thinking that it was going to be a lot more public comment than just us grilling Mr. Grimm. Plus it was the first time most of us had ever met him. So it was a learning experience for everyone. And then, you know, in our last meeting, the hard thing for us to move forward with was, you know, how long is it gonna take, whatever? I don't care, I've spent eight years on it. If it takes eight more, I'm fine with that. Where for, just for your reference, for all of you that weren't there, just so that we could inform the public what to look at to move forward. So for our special meeting that we already set up for the 24th of this month, we just said that we were gonna work from the Whiskey Rock document that's redlined so that the public had something to work from and we were all on the same page of what we were gonna go into that meeting and talk about. So if that is gonna be different, it would be very good if you informed us so we could inform the public.
I believe we did inform you of that at our last commissioners' meeting, uh, where the board voted to continue with the 23 revision at that point in time and we would terminate association with Whiskey Rock. That's already been stated.
We did not, that is not the way Chris relayed that conversation. That you did not, not want us to use a Whiskey Rock document, period.
At that point in time, it was stated that, uh, you could take in the two documents. And if you wanted to pull from the Whiskey Rock and insert that into the 23. And Dennis Forstrom was here at the meeting over at Marlton and he did hear that, yes.
Okay, he, he wasn't at the planning and zoning meeting, but.
Okay, that's why, I understand. Okay, good.
Okay, um, it just seemed easier for us because the red line is of the Whiskey Rock document. Where the 2023 document that we submitted has a lot of questions and then questions from, you know, it wasn't a refined finished document. It was a refined, go to a consultant and please answer all of these questions, which some were and some weren't. Which, you know, was a lot of the reservations Chris had of, you know, we didn't have that go between of how did Jeremy come up with what he decided to take away and what he decided to add? Which I'm fine from working from either one, but we just need to let the public know so that they know what document to be studying to come to the special meetings and work through.
Well, that's what was voted on at the last meeting, um, was the 23 revised with the Whiskey Rock being a part that you could pull from and pull that together at that point in time. Four fifths of the board was in agreement with that.
Okay. Which is fine, I mean, either way, you can work it either way. It just, it was a cleaner document, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Ollie?
Um, no, uh, I think that was great, thanks.
Are there other, any individual online?
Dan has his hand raised.
Dan, please?
Uh, good afternoon, good morning, good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, I, I don't understand how the planning and zoning board can feel that the Whiskey Rock uh, version is the one to, to go with because Whiskey Rock took some, uh, interlateral, uh, views on what they added in. And one of those examples is, is helicopters. Uh, there was no discussion of that. Uh, the planning and zoning administrator and, uh, Whiskey Rock collaborated at some level to add agricultural PUDs, which would open up quite a bit of, uh, of, um, development to, uh, our open ranch lands. They're just very uncomfortable with the situation since there's no chain of custody and how this document was arrived at. The planning and zoning board saying that, well, you know. The planning and zoning board saying that, well, you know, everybody was on board, but we were on board to the point where we got to the, to the red line. And there's, there's a number of problems with the whiskey rock draft. There's some errors and lots of errors in there, changes that weren't discussed. I think I saw in there that the, that minor subdivisions is increased from two lots to three lots. It still limits it to two lots. Just, I don't know what the planning is. I got the same feeling that, that Dave Stevens got for the, that the planning and zoning board was kind of ready to move it along, and now I hear that it's not. And I have to question whiskey rock. Is there any evidence that they ever have done a set of regulations before? Does Holly Roberts or Blake, are you aware that if whiskey rock has ever done this project before? And I know I can't ask them directly, but I'll ask the commissioners to ask them, is there any evidence that this is not their first rodeo?
Planning and zoning board did not hire whiskey rock. It was not our RP, and it was your guys', so. The planning and zoning board had nothing to do with picking whiskey rock.
Thank you. So I don't know if you could hear that, Dan, but Blake made a statement that hiring, hiring whiskey rock was not a planning and zoning decision. It was based from a vote on the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, but that still doesn't answer the question. And we're putting our, are we putting our hands into somebody that has zero experience with this? From looking at whiskey rock's, I don't know what you call it, resume? It doesn't appear as though that he's ever done this before. Shouldn't we know that?
Mr. Chairman, didn't we fire whiskey rock? And does this even pertain to anything going forward on planning and zoning?
Commissioners White, comment and statement is well taken. Whiskey rock is a non-topic at this point in time. I will defer all conversation moving forward to the 23 revised. And if the planning and zoning commission at that time wants to take excerpts from whiskey rock, you're entitled to. We've already paid for that, so there's no issue with that. But the whiskey rock draft is no longer valid. And I think that's a fair assessment to make based on last meeting. So from public opinion, if you have opinions or statements you'd like to make, we will forego any statement pertaining to whiskey rock and focus on the 23 revised.
Lacy Crawl here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm in agreement with you in determining that the 2023 document is the document that should be worked from. You know, with support from whatever they want to take from the whiskey rock document. I think that's a good decision, and I think it's a good decision because that was the document that public provided input in. Part of the problem with the whiskey rock is the public didn't have adequate input into that. I also want to say that it was clear in the meeting, the planning and zoning meeting that occurred. It was clear to me that the majority of the board members of planning and zoning actually did not want to do more work. That's what I came out of that meeting, understanding that they were satisfied with whiskey rock. And though everybody, or most of the public who participated in that meeting, asked them to go with the 2023 document, they did not want to do that. So I just want to encourage the board to continue to be cognizant of the necessity of public input in terms of this process. It's also the case that as an academic, having written and published many papers and worked with people, sometimes in collaboration on those papers, things can get very mixed up when you have a lot of different revisions. And that's another reason to go back to the 2023 and let the added document just be ancillary and input. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Are there any other public comments? Okay, closed to public comments. So moving forward, does the board have any specific statements or directions, guidance for planning and zoning?
I would tend to say they've got pretty good guidance. If we're going to go with 23, they could. When they feel they've got a document they've vetted and ready for us.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I would presume that taking the 23 back to planning and zoning table, that would be open for public if they wanted to participate?
True. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Are they going to have, be required to have special meetings or just participate during their regularly scheduled meetings?
That would be, you know, I guess that's up to them, but. Correct.
They've, they've put a lot of time into this.
And we need, and we need, yes, and it needs to come to an end. And I think hopefully we're getting down to the final phase of it, Commissioner Bradley. Okay, so at this point in time.
So I've got a question too.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens?
So how will the public be notified on that special meeting? Seventeenth, nineteenth, whatever it is?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth? Will they have some way to see that, that that's coming up later?
Thank you. Commissioner White, you had something?
Yeah, so what, so we're just on square. We're asking them to take this document from 2023, that they, they already put their comments in red. Planning and zoning put their comments in blue. What part of this process is planning and zoning? Are we telling our office to stay out of it? Are we telling Dennis and Tess to stay out of it? What, what is our direction as far as?
Thank you. I appreciate the, and by no means am I an expert. But going back to the meeting that was held in Marbleton in October, the directions from the board at that point in time was to go through item by item of the, of the draft, which is now the 23 proposed. Go through and obtain if public would be involved, great. And if not, great. That would be up to the county residents to decide if they wanted to be part of that. In regards to Dennis and Tess, your question was addressed at the last commissioners' meeting where County Attorney Clayton Malinkovich said, Dennis and Tess are only for reference purposes only. They are not to be involved in the drafting of any regulations. That is up, that is up to the, the planning and zoning members to put together the items in that planning and zoning regulation. Is, is that not correct?
I just heard my name when I was writing the sentence. I'm trying, was that what I, what I said? Or I said that the planning and zoning board is in charge of regulation?
As far as the draft, that is correct.
Because you do have a professional department with two people in it who have special expertise. And it think that you might be assisting a little bit of this if you tell them they can't participate, shouldn't be able to participate.
But that was my question distinctly to you at the last meeting. And I said, is the planning and zoning putting this together? And they are using Dennis and Tess as reference at that point in time? You told me yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So they're using it as a reference.
Okay, that's what I just said.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you said that they were not to be included in the process.
No.
Okay.
So again, again, restating to make sure that we're on the same page, is the planning and zoning commission are going to put the draft together to present to the Board of Commissioners? Dennis and Tess are to be used, utilized as reference for the planning and zoning commission to put that document together?
Yeah.
Okay, great. That, so we're on the same page. I want to make certain because the look on your face was.
Sorry, I only heard part of this.
Okay, good. Good enough. Thank you. I appreciate that. So that's, okay, and I think that makes sense. So and then going to someone's statement earlier. I'm sorry, I lost track. But it was stated in the October commissioners' meeting at that time. Go through the 23 draft, which is what we're doing. Make sure that everything, we've, we now have almost two years. So let's do it right. Make sure that everything flows together. If that makes sense. Good?
Sure.
Okay. Holly, are there any questions in regards to that direction?
No. Thank you guys very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you for bringing it, and sorry for the confusion we've caused you. And truly, we appreciate your time and efforts. Thank you so much. Emily, thank you. I'm sure your arm is tired. Fair.
Really quick, just to answer Sam's question. So if our agenda doesn't have a lot of stuff on it, and you just have one or two things or nothing in our normal monthly meeting, we turn into a regulation meeting. As we go into summer, and we will have more and more stuff, because we always have more stuff in the summer, we will have special meetings that are dealt directly to regulations. Which personally, I think those have better public input, and you come out with a better thing, because it's, this is what we're doing. We're doing regulations today, not doing a couple CUPs, and we're doing this, and we're doing that. And then, again, we're going to hurry up and do a little bit of work on regulations. But, so that's how it will work out. So I'm assuming, I would bet we just end up having five or six more special meetings that are just the regulations.
Thanks, Blake. Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time and effort on that. Okay. Next up, we have scheduled. Next up, we have public hearing, budget transfer on.
We do have budget transfer, usually three times a year. We're doing this budget transfer just to clean up some things so that as people go into their budget, they know exactly where they stand. And if there's anything we've run them short on, or they've run short on, trying to make them whole. We're pulling from a couple of different places. One is our budget shortfall reserve for $38,628. That is to cover part of maintenance. We get our property taxes, we pay our property taxes out of the maintenance budget. And Andre mentioned last year that even though they usually have enough money in their budget, sometimes having that run into the negative effects projects that they have planned. So I told him this year I'd make him whole, that we would not have him run in the negative for that property tax line item. Also, coming out of that budget shortfall reserve is public defender cost. Janet estimated around $88,000 last year, and it was $20,717.39 more than she anticipated. So that was going to run her budget really, really short. So we moved some money from the budget shortfall. So the budget shortfall reserve covers the property taxes and the public defender. Let's see here, wildland fire revenue. That is the money that we, oh, let me back up to unanticipated revenue. That is our sale in December for all the surplus vehicles. Also included in that is the $3,000 for the Suburban that we sold to the town of Pineville. So we have that in our unanticipated revenue. That money is going into equipment reserve. That's typically where we put those surplus sales. Okay, wildland fire revenue, this is a little different than the way we've done it in the past. In the past, we either do a budget transfer or Emily does a journal entry going from the funds we receive from wildland fire to fire depreciation. And that's just the way we've done it in the past. There were some things that we could do to clean that up. So I looked at it this year, tried to help answer some questions about the wildland fire process. So you see on the fourth line down, wildland fire is 300-225. Wildland fire expenses is 30227. So whenever there's a wildland fire and people from Sublet County are deployed on that fire, they are charged to that line item, 30225. So that's the 131,41326 is what was charged to that line item this last year. And then the equipment expenses, $13,209.87. In the past, when we first started doing the wildland fire transfers and things, Mary and I did discuss whether or not to move the fire warden's salary from the regularly budgeted place, where it is, the 301.50, to be covered by the wildland fire expenses. And at that time, we decided the salaries would stay where they were because we had already budgeted for them, and we were not expecting to be reimbursed for those salary line items. This time, I went ahead and reimbursed ourselves for the expense of the fire warden's salary, the deputy fire warden's salary, training officer's salary, and administrative assistant's salary while they were gone fighting those wildland fires. So the general fund budget for the fire department has been made whole by being reimbursed from those funds that come in from wildland fire. We also took it one step further and reimbursed ourselves for all their benefits. Their retirement, taxes, and social security. That leaves a remainder to go into the fire depreciation, which is just where we've put it in the past. We, at one time, kept the fire budget separate. And then a couple of years ago, we realized we didn't need to do that. We have been keeping it separate. At this time, if you feel like you don't want that excess $116,455.78 to go into fire depreciation, we can move it into something that you would rather move it into, like if you wanted to put it in budget shortfall reserve. But anyway, the, the 116,455.78 is the money that's left over from the wildland fire after all the expenses are refunded and paid. Okay, so public health. We normally budget between $70,000 and $90,000 for their vaccine expenses. And during the year, when they go over that in what they've brought in in revenue, we make their budget whole too, just to give them a little bit of wiggle room before the end of the budget year. And then the charitable relief program, that's your tax refunds that you choose, you decide on whenever we're going through budget. Emily and I don't usually put a number in there because there's really no way to know the exact number. So once we know what the Treasurer's Office has refunded, we pull it out of that reserve and make our 901 account whole. Any questions?
Yes, please may I? Your statement pertaining to the fire depreciation and the amount of $116,455.78, you said it would be, we could determine if we would leave it in depreciation or move it over to budget shortfall reserve. Is there any benefit of doing either one of them? And/or can we move it at a later date?
You can move it at a later date. We've just always pushed it into that fire depreciation. But I just wanted you to know that you do have that option of putting it in a different reserve account if you. reserve account if you wanted to.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Charitable relief program, is that a tax, the tax refund?
Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, you got the resolution number?
Resolution number is 25, a resolution authorizing transfer of county budget funds.
We didn't assign it a number yet. Sorry.
Oh.
Okay. It's 25 dash.
Oh, thank you.
Something. Yeah.
Okay. I understand. Got it.
Mr. Chairman, I make I move that we approve the resolution for a budget transfer. That the amount of $452,710.48 be transferred to supplement aforementioned budget items.
Have a motion made in regards to the budget transfer of $452,710.48. Is there a second? I have a motion by Commissioner White and a second by Commissioner Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying yes.
This is the one you need to sign.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing on that. I would like to say that the Wildland Fire Program has been very beneficial to us in the state. I'd like to see that proceed as it is. Everybody's good with that. I mean, it's a it provides training for our firefighters that we would otherwise have to send them off to. Plus, it gives us great standing in the state knowing that we have people from Sublet County help the state, especially in light of what happened last year on the other side of the state. Just a statement.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. It be signed. While that's being signed, we can go on to executive session for employee review. Peter Pollan, please.
Did you want this department update?
Did I miss that? Budgets. Oh, thank you. I'm with you now. Thanks. Thank you for coming.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. A quick update from a visitor center. The visitor center in Pinedale saw in February. So I'm reporting on the last, you know, it's April, it's February. Certain numbers come in. A total of 543 visitors, down about 13% from previous February 2024. Referral program that we have installed continues to be successful. We have 117 out of those people, 117 got direct referrals at a rate of 21.5%. And that's up about 8% from the previous year. Top referrals were outdoor rec restaurants and retail. And we had about 15 different states other than Wyoming visit. The top three states, we consider anyone outside the county as a visitor. So Wyoming did come in at number one in February, Utah, number two in Colorado. No countries visited the visitor center or checked in. We did have two bus stops, about 45 people each. And we continue with our new category tracking that kind of asking people why they're here. 28 of those said they're traveling through the area. Sublet County as a destination was 18. And locals looking for local information was 29. So kind of stats for any questions on that.
So in the middle of winter, February, we had 500 visitors.
543 people come into the visitor center that we track.
That could include residents, then?
That could include the residents.
Okay, thank you.
We continue with some very limited advertising and marketing. And we kind of shifted our promoting of the county to address events and assets now. So we'll be doing some advertising to promote like rendezvous, the German Mineral Show, the Sublet County Fair, the museums and things like that. So kind of switched from previous times when we were like, kind of promoting outdoor rec and stuff. And so we've kind of switched that over a little bit. My board agreed with the idea moving forward that we'll concentrate on those things for now. Because the outdoor rec thing seems to, you know, it's a little touchy issue as we know. So I'm moving our advertising funds towards those kind of things. And we use a lot of meta Facebook stuff. And I work with a small company out of Rock Springs called Adams Publishing. And they're putting together an I-80 guide, which will have, I think, 40,000 copies on the I-80 corridor. And we'll have a flyer and advertisement for that. But mostly it's going to be for those type of items and kind of switching our focus to kind of what we have. I guess when it comes to assets and more towards the business side of it and getting away from promoting, you know, outdoor rec ATVing, those type of things. So after our previous discussions in our meetings, I felt as though that was the direction probably the commission wanted us to go instead of just saying, come on out and go wild. And so that's kind of where we're focused at this point. We provide over 550 welcome bags for rent support already this year. We provide welcome bags with local information for different events. And that continues to grow. I'm currently working on four budgets right now. We have our budget with the county. We have the visitor center budget for the next fiscal year. And then later on in the meeting, real quick, we'll talk about the Green River Valley Museum project and visitor center down there. We're I've been working with some local entities and local resources and partners several bids for conferences here to hold different organizations have yearly conferences or meetings that could total anywhere between 50 to 350 people per conference. So we're putting together bids to have them that we would host those conferences, trying to concentrate on kind of the off season a bit. So when these, you know, really going after those times in October, November, when we're seem to be slower, that and when they have these conferences that we would, you know, be able to host those. And so we're working on that as well. The Sublet County Chamber of Commerce is moving from the visitor center. They have struck a deal with the town of Pinedale to rent the commission, the chamber office in the town of Pinedale's Town Hall. That will start after this next month. So I'll be into getting another renter for that office up there. They also provided Wi-Fi for the building, which will come to an end. So I'll have to acquire Wi-Fi for building as well. So moving forward. Then I had just a little quick update on the Green River Valley Visitor Center project. I've met with them several times. I've come up with, we had 10 grand set from the lodging tax funds to help support that project. So I'm coming up with a budget, which I'll introduce to the next meeting. I need to meet with them and kind of find out how this is going to work when it comes to the visitor center down there. I have not had much conversations with you guys about me personally, taking on that. I kind of just went move forward on it to be able to have a visitor center open down there this summer. The project moves forward. So I'm putting together a budget and I'm meeting with their board next week to find get the details worked out on how we can have a visitor center down there. I'm prepared to be able to be down there a few days a week this summer. We're looking at a January or sorry, July 1 opening day with an open house during the chuck wagon days parade in July 4 festivities. I thought it would be good timing to be open down there. So yeah, and how we staff it, how we how I do staff up here. Right now, we're in a position. We've had a part time employee over at the visitor center at times. And our department through our other budget has reimbursed the county for that. And we're prepared to do the same in Big Piney as well. So I will present a budget for the for that as well as the others, I guess, at the next meeting. And yeah, that's all I really have. You guys have any questions?
Good job.
So that 20,000 for the Friends of Bridger Teton? So how do you allocate that to?
So the first part of it was like 7,400, I believe, around there for this fiscal year. We've already confirmed that we'll have eight to nine ambassadors for that. That includes camp hosts at Fremont Lake Fremont Lake Campground, Green River Lakes Campground. I believe there's going to be one at New Fork this year. And they're working on Boulder Lake. And then I've addressed the issues of South County and also big sandy area as well. We're trying to get people down there ambassadors, but for camp hosts. And the other $23,000 will be on the next fiscal budget, 25, 26.
So the people that stay like at Fremont Lake Campground, the host goes through you?
No, they'll go through Friends of Bridger Teton as their ambassador program.
Where it's a Forest Service activity. I mean, on Forest.
They're not employees of Forest Service, obviously.
I understand that. But I mean, they're they're working under the Forest Service to do that.
The Forest Service used to provide funds to the Friends of Bridger Teton to provide ambassadors and camp hosts. They're not doing that. Their budget got cut. It's not going to come this year. So that's why we moved forward by reappropriating some lodging tax funds to help support that program. They do report to me monthly. And I ask them to come in and check in with me what's going on at your this, you know, your campground. You know, is there bear problems? This, you know, whatever it may be. And it become really important for that because I transfer that information on to visitors. So they have a heads up on it. It could be for whatever reason. And, you know, if there's a bear an issue down there or something like that. So.
So what camp hosts, what do they get? From doing that?
They they primarily get a place they guess, you know, they get funded stipend. It's also they stay there for free. Like, there's a woman named Linda, I believe, has been at the Green River Lakes Park Campground for the last 25 years as a host. So she runs that facility, takes care of the kiosk, keeps an eye on everything. She's not really in enforcement, but she's there for to make sure people are behaving themselves, I guess is the best way to put it. And to keep track of things, you know, sanitation, cleanup of the place and all that. So, yeah, there'll be other couple other ambassadors in that program, I guess, this year that will be floaters that will be helping out when needed at different locations. So I've met with the US Forest Service about having some presence at the visitor center down there in Big Piney this year. They're down to like one employee down there for the whole area. So we'll see what happens when some they've lost quite a few employees, but we'll see if that comes back or what happens. I'm not sure. But we're prepared to assist because they're very important people for the forest, the visitors. Yeah. And I can give you a more detailed, you know, I'll get Jennifer to come up with the breakdown exactly if you'd like to see that as well from the from the friends. Yeah.
Because I know they went to the rec board trying to get money. And I thought they were projected.
Mm hmm. Yeah, they probably went through. There's another part of that, that it's the sanitation part, which is all, she said, 48 vault toilets in the Bridger Teton Forest. So they need someone needs to attend to those. And so obviously, their vault toilets with they need to be, you know, style. Best way to put it sucked out or whatever, you know, cleaned out of them. So.
But it has the Forest Service system.
The Forest Service provided funding to the Friends of Bridger Teton to provide that. They didn't do it.
I mean, they have to get somebody like him and him.
Yeah, correct. That's what they need to do. They're working on that now for this season. So they're finding other funding sources for that, for that particular portion. Ours was concentrated on the ambassador program this year. So and next fiscal year. So.
Back to your advertising schemes. Caught a lot of trouble. And I think it was Mike Crosson might have said, you know, you ought to be advertising. Come here, enjoy it, take care of it, help us keep it clean, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
And the other day, as in Laramie and the Albany County radio station had an ad on, you know, we appreciate you snowmobilers here. Come enjoy your stay, but do things responsibly. I'm just wondering if if your budget would allow for during peak time of the summer to advertise on local radio stations.
Yeah, I guess we could. I, you know, we have a new radio station in town, 102.7, the peak. I've had some discussions about doing some stuff with Blake over there. Mainly my stuff was, you know, in my job, I do a lot of local sharing of information that helps out the community as well through Facebook and stuff and Meta. So a lot of the other stuff that we do is focused on outside of the county and attracting people to come here.
I just wonder if you can get their attention why they're here. I mean.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
A local campaign on the radios to.
Sure.
Put the local dollars back into the community.
Yeah.
Good point.
Certainly. I agree with that. Great idea.
Mr. Chairman.
So she went back to. Bridger teach Friends of Bridger Teton. So I know those guys operate with an MOU between the Forest Service. Can you look into would it would it behoove us to also enter into an MOU with Fringe of Bridger Teton in this ambassador program? And, you know, get with Clayton, talk to those guys.
Sure.
And see if that's something that we should probably entertain.
Yeah, they're very important for us. I mean, Jennifer explained a lot last the other two meetings ago, I guess. She's a rep from there. So most certainly, but just a governing document that just spells out. Absolutely. I'll take care of it. Yeah, I'll reach out. Thank you.
Yeah. So Peter had one question concerning the ambassadors. I'm not one that hikes, used to a little bit, but I don't anymore. But I've heard from the local folks who do hike and hike a lot about their concerns of the trail, the refuse, what have you that shows up. So is this a program that could incorporate some, I'll take my backpack and clean the trail to such and such?
Exactly what they do.
But without the funding that they're getting going to get, will they continue to do that?
Funding that we provided through the lodging tax account is going to help.
Will take care of that.
Yeah. So they do a lot of, I think Jennifer explained that they do a lot of data collecting and information to people. So they'll be out there on the trail, keeping an eye on things, picking up after people, but also giving out information because they find people who are like, where am I? You know, so get lost out there. They miss the sacred rim turn. And next thing you know, they're on photographer's point and out of water. And so, yeah, they do out there and they did provide that kind of service and also clean up as well. They also work with a bunch of volunteers around the area and Google out and hike. And they're also responsible for that, including myself, or like, wow, I'll make sure pick up when needed.
Thank you for that. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay, now I'd like to move to executive session for employee review.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into executive session for statute 16 dash 4 dash 405A, number 2, Employee Performance Review.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Stevens. All in favor? Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Stevens, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance by Commissioner Vickery and a second by Commissioner Stevens, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I was not up here. What was the motion for?
It was for approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Wyoming Department of Transportation and Sublet County.
This is on the Sears radio program system.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on real quick. Oh, yes, please. So I know Tom used to sit on this board. I think part of our thing was that we always had a commissioner on the Sears board. And as he's gone, I think they only meet every other month or so. I'd volunteer to do it unless one of you guys want to step up and jump on this board. But I think we need to establish one of our commissioners, one of us back onto this board.
I'm happy with Sam being on it.
Yeah, that's fine. If you can't make it, let me know. I'll go.
Perfect. Would you rather go in his place?
No, sir.
Just clarifying. We're all good with that? Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, moving along, we have opioid settlement funds and it requires an expenditure report each year. So for the end of the calendar year 24, this county needs to submit our expenditure report, which I have confirmed with both Carrie and Emily, that was the zero dollars have been expended at this point. And we just need a signature on that to certify that we have these dollars and we haven't spent them.
Please.
So are funds still coming in or what's going on with some of those big settlements?
So we have our proportionate share, which ends up being relatively small, the way that they calculate it. I think this one in this, from this settlement, I think it's 2,500 and change. The other settlements have a larger amount. This, so each one of them has their own reported requirements. I am not aware of any additional funds coming down the pike. Right now, as you recall, there is a group that involves, that includes Cassie from Treatment Court and Public Health that meets and has been tasked by you all with the purpose of trying to figure out how to spend this money. Don't know when the last time they met was, but that they have not brought in suggestions yet to this group in order to spend the money. But that's the directive, is that once they come up with a recommendation, they come to this group and say, hey, we recommend spending the money on A, B, and C.
So what kind of figure we got now that's still left to?
Candidly, I don't know off the top of my head. But it, so with these opioid settlement funds, they're very, very specific in how they must be used. Because they have to be used, not just with addiction issues, but solely with addiction issues tied to opioids, which luckily, and knock on wood, Sublet County doesn't have as big of a significant issue with opioid concerns as other counties in the state do.
Okay, have a participating local government opioid expenditure report for calendar year 2024 is presented by Clayton Malinkovich. Motion to accept.
So move Mr. Chairman on second.
I have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Bradley, all in favor. Say goodbye. Aye. Thank you.
Okay, next up is memorandum of understanding with Sublet County and BLM as a cooperating agency. Thank you, with regards to the dry piney helium and carbon sequestration project. This just came across my desk before. I don't know if the board has had an opportunity to review this and we can certainly delay a little bit. But it is similar to any other cooperating agency, MOU. Ultimately, the BLM is saying it's our decision, but we want your expertise with regards to what you have expertise over, which is socioeconomics of your county, recreation existing in your county, property use and so on and so forth from Sublet County. So this is just, it's regarding the dry piney helium project. So has this come across your emails?
It's definitely out there because Andrew called about it and saw that we were going to be.
It was a couple of meetings back, we decided to enter into cooperating agency status with the BLM on this. They're just sending the contract back to us now. And at that, that meeting, we chose me to be the spokesman or the representative for this board. And all this is, is the contract coming back now with the BLM on that.
Sounds good.
So if you do want to give it one then to present then, I guess, or make your motion?
I think, I think you've already presented it very well. So I, uh. Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Sublet County and the BLM and the dry piney helium project.
I have a motion by Commissioner White and a second by Commissioner Bradley, all in favor.
Hey, while you're signing that, I'll go ahead and talk about the next memorandum of understanding, just as a, as a background on this. Sublet County works, the county works with the town of Pinedale with regards to kennel space for animals. On thankfully, it's rare occasion, Sublet County Sheriff's Office comes into possession of animals in the performance of their duties, whether or not someone gets arrested and there's a dog in the backseat and so on and so forth. And this is an understand memorandum of understanding with the town of Pinedale for the use of its kennel, so that they can, and then it delineates cost sharing and everything with when the county has dogs in its custody, they're at the kennel. It has come up and needs renewed. We have started making all of these contracts instead of having them be annual. We have started making them follow the term of the sitting sheriff. So now this one will actually go through 1231 of 26 instead of being renewed annually. Because we've, we've missed a couple, thank you, in the shuffle of contracts. So we started putting them out for that full term. So that's what this memorandum of understanding is. Questions on that?
Have a memorandum of understanding between Sublet County and town of Pinedale is presented by Clayton Malinkovich. And retain it. Motion by Commissioner Bradley.
So, so the question I would have is, if the sheriff's department pick them up and they go to the town, to the town builder county?
Yes, so that's precisely how it works. If it's in the, if it's in the town's, if they're caring for the animal and it's an animal that is and it's an animal that is under the custody of the Sublet County Sheriff's Office, the Sublet County Sheriff's Office pays for that. Now, to back up a layer further, there are ways that through a prosecution, if it re-involves something with regards to the animal or other things, my office can ask for reimbursement on those costs in certain circumstances to offset that cost to the county. And we do that. So it's not a significant cost outlay. It doesn't happen that often. So.
So a little question here. So if they get the dog in the county, but the town doesn't make any difference if the sheriff falls just in some way?
Yeah. So for example, there was an arrest, I think it was two years ago, where some folks were arrested for a variety of criminal charges and in their vehicle, they had three dogs. And in that process, county has to put those dogs somewhere. So Animal Control for the town of Pinedale took those dogs, took them to the kennel, fed them, so on and so forth. And then the county ended up paying for the costs associated with the time that those animals were at the kennel.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Bradley, memorandum of understanding between Sublet County and the town of Pinedale, is there a second?
All seconded up.
Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lastly, per your request at the last meeting, this is a memorandum of agreement between Sublet County and the town of Pinedale for the purposes of transferring ownership of the parade fire truck, per your request.
Yeah, but memorandum of agreement between Sublet County and the town of Pinedale is presented by Clayton Malinkovich, as directed by the board of commissioners at our last meeting. Is there a motion for acceptance on this? Yes.
I'll second it.
That heat.
That was a short version. That was a short version.
Yeah. I have a motion by Commissioner Vickery, second by Commissioner Bradley, all in favor of the transference.
Pretty needy today.
I am needy.
Yeah.
Noticed that he didn't have to miss all those pages.
I did, when he said, ever since I got comfortable.
Exactly. Workman's comp will take care of it. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, Karen Taylor with the Green River Valley Museum requesting additional funding for the Texco renovation.
High as mine. You should have seen me when I had my mustache on.
Thank you for coming over. Sure appreciate you, my boy.
Thank you for seeing us.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you, Mark. Yep.
We're gonna have, I'm Karen Taylor. I'm the bookkeeper of the Green River Valley Museum. This is Clarissa Johnson. She's the director. She's going to kind of fill you in. I know a couple of you guys have been over and walked through the Texco building, that project we're doing. We appreciate that. And this is Tony.
Oh, I know. Yes.
She's a very important board member. And we also have Gary Neely. He's on the Sublet County Museum Board and bringing us here today.
Thank you.
So Clarissa is going to fill you in on kind of the project that, that we've got going. She's got some pictures here before and after.
Too many, but it's pretty exciting. Sorry. Okay. So I'm just here to kind of fill you in on what we've done so far. And it's pretty amazing what they've done over there. Mike Brabazon and his crew and Tim Wilson. Anyway, so far, they put in all the steel beams, support walls. They put in the roof that everybody wanted with the incline. Before they did that, they sealed it. And then they made an incline with metal roofing. And there has been no leaks at all. Most of the siding is put on except for a couple of pieces. The heating and cooling is almost done. Each section's going to have its own little heating unit, so you're not heating the whole building if the visitor center is open and nothing else. Vice versa. And also, almost all the electrical is done. They've put in all the lighting. And let's see. We have one wall that we have to do by the apartment. It's mostly done. We redid the north wall, the east wall. Most of the sheet rock is put in. They just finished jackhammering the cement, the old cement. They had to go clear down to the dirt. What they did is they kept putting layers of cement and there was a bunch of stuff underneath there, like old pipes and stuff, and so it cracked. I'm not a carpenter, but that's kind of what I.
It's all the adults.
They just, this morning, they just started putting this new cement down. They also started on the plumbing and we're going to have three stalls for the women, I believe, and two stalls and one urinal for the men's. And so that we can, because Peter says, all the people, that's what they come for, the visitor centers, so he's the restroom. So that's not exactly what he says. Um, let's see. And also, we had an engineer from Jurgensen's come in and all he could do was say, that's exactly what I would have done. So he thought it was definitely structurally sound. He looked at all the support walls, the beams, took his time. And he just said, that's exactly what I would have done. So they did a really nice job. So he's supposed to be sending us a letter, saying it's good, and then he's going to come back and check it out when we have it finished or along the way. And I think that's it. And I have some pictures if you guys have time or whatever, but.
So before we even started, we, you know, we have this building donated to us and it sits on three city lots. The guy that owned it just donated the whole building. And before we did anything, we had Jurgensen's come in and walk through and see if it was structurally worth renovating. And they said it absolutely was. Their cost to, approximate cost to renovate it, which was two and a half years ago, when we got bid, was between six and $800,000, which was still probably cheaper than building the new one. And, you know, it's right on the corner of 189 and Main Street. So everybody that drives through town, comes to town, sees this building. It's always been kind of an eyesore. I've always thought, how do you do something with that building? So this was perfect. And I don't know if you guys have driven by or whatever, but the improvement's on it already. Or every time I drive by, I'm like, there's a light on in there now that they have a security light. They leave on all night. And I'm just like, it's just exciting to see it, see it go up. So to this point, we've spent about $296,000 with the help funding from the county. We've also received two grants from the Wyoming Community Foundation that we had to match. And the way we match that is we have our, we have a fundraiser every year, which we just got done doing. And it was a grant for $15,000 and we had to match it for that. And we came in just right under that, you know, thanks to Dave for all sharing for us. And it's always a very successful fundraiser. We also have our membership drive that we do, that we're sending out right now. So those are our two big fundraisers. And so we've, we've got to this point, we figure we're probably about halfway with the, with the renovation. But we've kind of come to a standstill with funding it. We dipped in a little bit to our emergency funds, which I don't really like to do. I like to have those emergency funds. So I don't know if you've got a copy of the proposal here. So we're, we're here to request help with finishing this project. We figure with our contractors' estimates and stuff, we figure it's going to take us just $300,000 to, to finish it. Get the inside finished, done, have the visitor center open, the bathrooms available. Have the total inside done and the outside. You know, we want the outside to look as good as we do the inside. We've already renovated a, an old gas pump, you know, that we had already, right? Yeah. Do for us. You know, we took it apart, redid it, all painted it, so it's going to be beautiful. And we've got two others that we would also like to do the same with and put them out front, you know. We've got a, we've got our hands on maybe a donated Texco sign, big, I think they're two foot letters, that we can put on the front of the building. That we're working on trying to get that. So we want the outside to look as good as the inside. There's, we have two apartments on the back of the building. One of them is a two-bedroom, pretty nice apartment that we've actually got someone in right now. Dr. Byerman's got an intern in there renting it for a couple of months from us. And it's, so it's rent ready. There's another little studio apartment on the other side of it that would take a lot of work to, to get it ready to rent. So our plan is to remove that apartment and, because we're in need of parking around that building. So part of this total proposal would be removing that apartment and putting parking around there. So we've done it in two phases. The total project is $298,500. We could do it in two phases. The first phase would be to finish the interior, get the visitor center open, so, you know, we can, we can use it. And that first phase would be about $148,000 that, like I say, we're in the need of now in order to continue with this. Our contractor also does fencing in the summer. So in about May, June, he goes fencing. So we're, once he finishes, where he's at right now is getting the sheet rock done, the, the concrete poured. Then we're kind of at a standstill. We're kind of at the end of our funding. We started this project in the fall of '22, so we've been, you know, working a little over two years. And so did you like we're doing, you know, it's going to be another couple of years probably before we can get open and use it. So we're requesting help from, from you guys to, to get this project finished and open. And like I say, we had the first phase, we could get the inside done and actually open it. And then the second phase would be to get all the exterior done, which is going to involve some concrete and tear down this apartment and, you know, beautify it. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at.
With this funding, you can, Mike has time to get, where you can have doors open this summer?
He says, he says he does. Yeah, he, like I say, he's got all the, all the sheet rock up, you know, we would have to, he's got to install a drop ceiling. All the electrical's done, other than just hanging the fixtures, doing the light switches. He's got the most biggest part of. Yeah. So, and we've already, we've got a bid from a gal who can go in and paint it, get all the painting done. So we.
So this would be phase two here with the demolition of the little apartment stuff now.
Yeah, and there's.
Obviously, it's an eyesore, but what about leaking problems on that back wall?
When they redid the roof, that, you know, that was the biggest problem.
Won't be any issue.
Won't be any issue. Because he's going to extend the, he'll extend that roof they've already put over the, over the apartment and the parking area. It'll include a roof that'll go out over a carport for the apartment parking, so they don't have to park out on Main Street. And, you know, would actually put some parking between the Dixie Drive-In right now and us on that, on that. on that, on that, what's it, the north side, east side? So, you know, museum parking can be there.
So if you put a gas pump out front on the corner, there'll be no parking right on the corner.
Probably, we'll probably, we'll probably try to...
He said he was gonna put it closer to the building, so nobody runs into it.
So we could pull, like, maybe there'd be room for a bus to pull in that front, not a very big one, but... Yeah, so parking, and I think we could get permission, like with the school, to park across, in, you know, the bus garage parking there, there's lots parking there that we, I think they would let us use in the summer when we were open. But this would allow for parking for the apartment, and some for the museum.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
You guys always, you talk in terms of wants and needs. And I think this, for me, would fall under a need. As I think about the economic impact it could have on Big Piney, just in bringing people in. And there's also the preservation of our, of our past. But from my point of view, it's, it's a need. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Mr. Chairman.
And I would encourage you, they're asking for half of it now. I'd ask you to think about doing the whole thing now, so they can finish this project up.
Carrie, our museum reserve fund, of which we pulled the money out of, a million, what, we've got? Four million left in there?
Four and a half.
Four and a half?
Thank you. Double check.
So something like this would fit the ticket that we could pull out of museum funding and finish this project?
When I met with them earlier, we talked about the total cost, and dividing it into bits for you. Like to get it to the first phase now, and then maybe fund the second phase in the budget. But, yeah. Either, either or, it would be appropriate to pull out of the museum.
Mr. Stevens.
Well, you all know I've been for 400% from the start, so there's no question. So it's just, you know, I think we'll give you all the money, I feel confident. You know, and it's just how you need it probably is based today. I think, I might be wrong, but that's what I think will happen.
Fantastic.
Do you like some pictures that hasn't been there, or...
We also, let you know, we acquired a 1934 Ford pickup from a gentleman whose family used to have a ranch in...
Over by the Todd place, in Dunham.
The name was Morrison.
Morrison. And it, I mean, it's been in the garage its whole life, it looks like brand new. They actually drove it up here in, was it October? Yeah, hit a storm on the way up here, they, they didn't drive it up, they hauled it up. Then we drove it into the museum, so it's in pristine condition. And so, you know, we've got a garage in that Texaco building, we wanna park it in as part of the museum. So it's, yeah, it's pretty neat.
And the building itself was, the original was built in 1912 or 13. So we're preserving a monument in my estimation. It's great, anytime we can save one of those.
Thank you for the picture offer, I was over there and took a tour of it two weeks ago, maybe three. It's wonderful, my gosh.
Very nice, isn't it?
Yes, it is, that's an understatement.
Exciting.
Yes, any questions at this point in time?
Well, I'd just like to make a statement, Mr. Chairman, so please. We just went to do some discussion with zoning about preservation of our community for the future, the people that are gonna be after us. And some of you know me, some of you don't. With my hair off, I look different. But it is April Fool's Day.
That's right.
So I, I can relate personally to what you're trying to get done down there, because I grew up there. And I remember when Urban Coville owned that facility, which was a Texaco station. I can remember Pappy Cruz being the guy that, he was an army dude, but I got my driver's license, my first one, from him, so there's history. And I suspect maybe that this will bring some of that in some way together. Serves an invaluable resource, in my opinion. Unlike Commissioner Stevens. You know, sometimes emotions get carried away, and I'm not gonna let that happen, I'm just gonna be pragmatic about this thing and say, "I'm in full support of it". So I believe if the funding can be made available, I don't see us doing it halfway, I see us doing it all the way. So that's dependent upon, of course, the funding issue. And if it's available, sounds like it could be, then there's no question about my support for it.
Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Vickery. Are there any comments or statements from the public on this? None being noted, we'll move on, thank you. So the question before us is, we have a couple of them, do you wanna approve any money going towards the, the restoration of the old Texaco building? Do you want to consider the $150,500? Or are you comfortable going with the $301,000, is what I understand the total amount would be? Is that correct?
$298,500, just under $300,000.
Thank you for that.
Would take $301,000.
Tell me you did that last nail in.
Yes, please.
No, I'm, I don't, I know all these people, I don't think they're gonna be wasteful and, you know, goof off any of the money. I'm fine with just giving them all of it. In that way, they don't have to worry, they don't have to come to us, they know it's gonna happen.
Okay. Do I take that as a motion, or are we just talking? Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
Make a motion, $298,500 to be issued.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Stevens for $298,500. Anyone care to second that?
Seconding.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stevens, seconded by Commissioner Bradley. Is there any further discussion pertaining to this? We'll be pulling it from the reserve accounts, museum reserve. All in favor, signify.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Project's been approved, thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you for coming over, I like what you're doing over there, truly thank you.
Exciting.
Even if you hang out with...
Yeah. Um, yes. Yeah. Well, you need some... That's the plan.
I'm setting back.
As long as you don't say April Fool's.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure. Okay, motion to break for lunch?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion made, breaking for lunch.
Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't bring my, uh, what's the?